We've muted.
John, you're muted. Are you able to hear us?
I can hear you now.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Hey, how's it going?
Oh, so crazy busy. I just wanted to let you know my email said that the closed session was at seven, so.
Okay.
But I'm available till eight.
Okay. Well, we will all this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order at seven o'clock. John, would you do roll call for us, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hansett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Here.
Town Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Berce.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond. John Hudson, Town Clerk here.
We can rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. So we're going to do a review of the agenda. Administrator Snyder, is it possible while we're reviewing the agenda for you to grab these on chair, like a desk chair?
A desk chair, like a rolly?
Like a rolly one. Thank you. All right. John, can you review the agenda for us, please?
Will do. Regular town meeting agenda, one, call to order, two, roll call, three, pledge of allegiance, four, review of agenda, five, consent agenda, including meeting minutes, financial report, public safety report, public works report, and administrative report. Six, report. The Arts Council, CERT, Economic Development Work Group, Events Committee, Green Team Committee, Greenwell Consulting Committee, Historical Committee, and Commissioner Reports. Seven, business. We've got ordinance A, ordinance 2023-03 fiscal year 24 budget introduction, B, ordinance 2023-04 personnel introduction, C, resolution 2023-09 human resources firm contract or vote, eight, administrative updates, nine, public comment, anything necessarily on the immediate agenda, and 10, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda, and 11, motion to go into closed session.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? I'm gonna make a recommendation of maybe we should move the board vote to item A since Commissioner Hansett has been called in to work. He is joining us for one hour on his lunch. That way he'll be able to vote. Is everyone okay with switching to C and A?
Yeah.
All right, so we're just gonna make that change. I don't hear any other changes. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
John, will you please call the roll for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to reports, starting with the Arts Council. I believe they have not met yet. Is that correct? So there's no report from the Arts Council. Chief Berce, can you give us a CERT?
Yes, for last month, CERT did a total of 99 hours of meetings, events, committee CERT hours, which was a total of 99 hours.
We'll go move on to, thank you, the Economic Development Work Group. Commissioner Colbert, do you have anything or work?
No, no update at the moment. We passed the legislation last month. Conversations. Of some folks who expressed interest that I need to add. And we're gonna put out a call for this as well, so.
Event committee?
Nothing new. The event committee is working on Marlboro Day, which is May 13.
Commissioner Hansett, do you have a Green Team report?
Yes, I do. I just want to report that we built the planters as well as expanded the garden. So we got those built. We're working right now on filling them and getting some planting done very soon. The mulch came in, so we're going to be working on a volunteer schedule to get the process going on there. So we'll be coming out with a schedule for the Green Team shortly. Hopefully by the end of this week or next, beginning of next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Snyder, do you have a report from Greenwell? I don't know if we've talked to them.
No, we haven't talked to them.
And so the Historic Committee, the Chair of Historic Committee Leon Miller, sent me an email saying that they're working on their events and their budget. What I have from them. I believe they're planning to be at Marlboro Day and think they may be still doing, be doing an event in the spring. We will move on to Commissioner Report. And I will start off. We've had a, we've had a lot of events are starting to pick up for the spring. We have a new church in town, Christ Way Cathedral. They're at the Trinity campus. There's now three churches over there and they had a ribbon cutting. We also, I got the pleasure of reading some essays for the If I Were a Mayor contest that MML does, which is really fun and that gives us credit towards our Banner City. I also attended PG-CMA legislative meetings as well as regular meetings. We have had Pepco volunteers came out to work in our community garden, so was able to coordinate supplies for that. We also had Soil Conservation had their annual operators dinner. They honored 804 Cow Company, which is in Greater Upper Marlboro, so that was exciting. The town had Coffee with a Cup on Saturday. I attended that as well as a community cleanup. We had a community conversation in Spring Branch, which was good. We had about five people come out to that, I think. Also attended an honorary for Mr. Tomic Sturick over in Acukey. And with regards to annexation, I've had several discussions and negotiations as well as done some door knocking, both in the annexation area we're working on right now as well as folks who are in various HOAs have contacted me to talk about that. And we had a meeting, as requested by the village's HOA, to just let people know what annexation would be like and if they're interested in that. We had First Amendment training here. And, oh, we met with Marbraid Strategies and they were talking with us in our economic development firm about how to make some of the economic development items happen downtown. And met with the county Deputy Chief Administrative Officer Holt. He's in charge of infrastructure, technology, and environment. So we were able to talk about our storm drain problems and get some of those resolved right away after that conversation. I've been meeting, we've been meeting with the redevelopment authority and I've been meeting and submitting testimony with the county council regarding our economic development funding. Oh. Two more things. We are going to be a zip trip community this summer. So did an interview with Fox Five to kind of like prep that, and that will be airing on May 5th, correct? And then the other thing is that the Economic Development Firm is also doing the branding, has some initial logo designs. They're gonna communicate with the commissioners and get some feedback from us. And then that's gonna narrow it down to a smaller number of logo designs, and then the community is gonna vote on that. And we'll, I'll hand it over to Commissioner Colbert.
For me this month, attended some of the same meetings you mentioned. Mayor Franklin attended the Villages of Marlboro Annexation Information Meeting. Also attended PG-CMA General Meeting. Door knocking in the annexation area. Trying to provide some information and answer any questions. Had some conversations with Better City about some of their updates and things they're doing. And about Trump.
Commissioner Hansett?
Thank you. I attended the First Amendment Training this month. I met with Kyle a couple times and worked with him on getting set up to pay the town bills, and that's about it for this month. Thank you.
Great. We will move on to items of business. You know what, John, actually, we didn't have a before-business public comment, so I'm gonna offer that now. If any resident wants to make general public comment now and not at the end of the meeting, they are welcome to come up now. If you come up now, you can't come up for general public comment at the end. But you can speak on items of business. All right, we will move into our first item of business, which is gonna be resolution 2023-09 human resources firm contract. I know you're gonna have to flip through the slides, John, sorry.
No worries.
Sir Hudson, would you read that into the record for us, please?
Will do. Resolution 2023-09 session, regular town meeting dated April 25, 2023. A resolution of the Town of Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro approving the agreement with blank to provide human resources services to the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Thank you. Kyle, do you wanna introduce it in any way or?
Absolutely. So the board released an RFP for human resources firms. We think for all of our services every two years, we got four firms that responded. And a breakdown was provided in the fourth session. So I think
All right, so we will take public comment on the HR firm, if there is any. You can see, just step up to the podium if you're here. John, if you could look for any raised hands of anyone online.
There is no one online.
And no one has come up to the podium. So I'm gonna ask if there is a motion to approve resolution 2023-09 human resources firm contract and award that contract to all profit. Is there a second?
Second.
Do you call the vote for us, Sir Hudson?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move on to ordinance 2023-03 FY24 budget. Sir Hudson, would you read that into the record for us, please?
Will do. Ordinance 2023-03 session, regular town meeting introduced April 25, 2024. An ordinance relating to adopting and approving the budget for the fiscal year 2024 along with the corresponding tax levies, and to set forth compensation for employees and officers, and to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending same as more particularly set forth herein.
Administrator Snyder, do you wanna do an overview for us?
Absolutely. So this is the annual budget ordinance. The board discussed it when I was It, uh, there's still some discussion the board has to make on some items. But I know the work, they went line by line at the last work session. I was gonna get in at the following work session to get it finalized and being finalized and possibly pass.
Yes, and if we don't pass it at the May town meeting, we'll have to call it special meeting to pass it because of the timeline. Just so that the public is aware what we did at the last session, which we got it down by a lot, but not quite as much as we wanted to get it down by. So in order to introduce it with a zero balance, we put in an amount that is a transfer from reserve and the intention is to work that transfer from reserve out. So that it, we're not transferring money from reserve for operating. But we hadn't come to all our decisions at that point and we needed to, that introduced budget has to have a zero balance. So that number that you see on page 15 for $74,544 will be adjusted at the May work session. So we will give the public a chance to comment. If you wanna comment, go ahead and just come on up to the podium.
Patty, Ed Calacott from Church Street. I was looking at the numbers and I just was a little confused that the numbers in the sheet or your commencement didn't match the 23 budget numbers. And I was wondering why that was. In other words, if I look at general government, it says 855, 570. But if I look at the 23 budget, it's actually on this sheet, it's different. It's 835. And that's for all three of those areas of general government, public safety, and public work. Those numbers don't match with in the The two budget, I mean, don't match on each one of those. So general government is 815, 202. But on the spreadsheet where you're doing the breakdown, the FISL 24 is 835, 452.
You're looking at the FY23 budget.
Yeah, the FY23 budget and the FY23 budget that's on here, this one, and they didn't match.
Right, because this is the FY24 budget.
This one, the 24? Maybe that's where I was mistaken. I was looking at this.
But the numbers are, no, the numbers match up.
And the other thing that I saw is when we were going through the committees, all of those fundings have gone down to a significant amount. Is, is, do they still have the ability to do things like purchase pens or any of that, or is that coming back on the town's budget at that point?
The committees request their budget and then we accommodate as much of the budget as we can while balancing the budget. And then they can determine how they're gonna allocate the money.
Because they significantly decreased based on what had been in the past. And that was kind of what they were able to purchase at the time. And the only other thing that I noticed was looking at the breakdown of the of the steps. There's really no way to tell who is making what and what steps they're at for each one of those positions. And then the other one is, it didn't have the chief at all in there. And I was wondering where that comes in in the budget because it didn't look like it came under safety or general government. So those are just some of the things that I noticed just going through the budget.
Any other public comment?
I was looking at health, life, and dental. There's no projected amount to be split.
Do you under public works? Yes. That is because it is all currently tied up into the FICA amount and it needs to be split out. It will be split out. It just has not been split out. They have insurance.
And I agree also with the committees being cut as much as they have been. That seems a little odd. You're asking people to volunteer and then you're not giving them anything to work with. So I think that's gonna be a bone of contention in this committee for sure. And again, I don't, I'm in the public safety. I don't see a salary line or chief anywhere in the budget, actually. And I don't know whether that is. In the future, if you could make this a little bit bigger, it's hard to be very small. What is under, I guess this is public safety. What is occupancy? Public safety occupancy? Ground on that.
So that's because we charge them rent so that we can adjust the
And professional services, I'd like to know whether that entails as well.
So those two are splits. So what we did in the budget and something, I think in the last fiscal year budget, was we split the professional services across all three categories. So like human resource, like professional services that are shared across departments, they used to all be under general government. So we split like the amount for human resources and accounting and stuff in all three budgets. And that's a big thing for the, especially the police grants. It's a better representation of what you're actually doing. Occupancy is the, their share of the building occupancy.
Okay.
Those amounts were pulled out of general government.
And just to reiterate, you're trying to put that money back in reserve as soon as you balance the budget?
The police. The police intending to do it at the next meeting, so be there to watch us.
The only transfer from reserve is 190.
The capital improvement.
Yeah.
So hold on, we're done with our three minutes, or we take our next person?
So we're playing with one more fight. On the grants, you showed that you have, the budget for this year is 1.3 million and it's so far down to 330, 330,000. Are you expecting that to come in through the rest of the year or is that something that's not gonna come in until next year and so that's why next year is so high?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's, you think it's gonna come in next year?
As we draw it down, it will come in.
Just a quick point.
Hold on, because I can't, I can't, I need to speak up for her.
Okay, I was gonna say it was the 23 budget that I was looking at, that those numbers are in for it.
Okay. Does anyone else have a public comment?
Only $6,000. Don't we be seeing more of them throughout town?
Didn't know there was a report that got put in last week. But again, they are patrolling the town, so. I've certainly heard the opposite, so I, I mean. Yeah. Any other? So anything commissioners want to press now or we wanna just get back to this at the work session? Say what they've said and make our adjustments.
Some of the questions that they asked should be answered.
So I would say we are trying to balance the budget and get that reserve number down, so that is why we did make some cuts to committee. As I think most of us know, the chief's salary is part of a contract, which will be approved with the budget. And that will be something everyone can look at at that time. We answered that question. We answered that question. Anything?
So what kind of, so the transfer from reserve, I thought at the work session, we had gotten a little bit closer than this.
We had, and then we got new quotes in from some of our professional services. Not, it's not actually, it's, was it NTI?
Yeah, it's not true.
I think the, the reason I think that all of us had kind of independently liked all profit was because it was in budget. So yeah, so we'll have to deal with even more of us. But Kyle and I are still actively working on all the numbers, so we'll see.
Questions that the revenue is different part in categories, what, is those trends?
We'll have a monthly report soon, the end of this month, and we can maybe make adjustments. So we'll see different numbers in May. We will move on to, or, or sorry, Commissioner Hansett, did you have anything you wanted to say or add? I don't wanna forget about you because you're not.
Not this time, thank you.
So we'll move on to ordinance 2023-04 personnel. John, if you could read that, Sir, Sir Hudson, if you could read that into the record for us?
Will do. Ordinance 2023-04 session, regular town meeting introduced April 25, 2023. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2022-02 to reestablish and change certain aspects of a personnel system with certain guidelines, pay grade, salary standards, and procedures for the employees of the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Commissioner Snyder, do you wanna take us through why we're, why we're talking about this and a few of the little changes?
Sure. So what changes are highlighted, well, they're not highlighted, but there is in all caps, just so you can see where the changes are. Propose being made, these were, there's some feedback from the commissioners, some discussions, personnel, the budget, and we're not coming first. So some minor changes.
You didn't add anyone to your?
No, not in here, but in the budget.
Oh, right, right. So we will take public comment and then we'll discuss that comment. If you, if you have comment, come up to the podium and no public comments, do you guys have anything? Commissioners?
Everybody, everybody's salary isn't listed here as far as their pay grade.
Right, so we'll be discussing more of this after this closed session. But again, chief is a contract, so it's different.
My question would be, why does he have to have a
My question would be, why does he have the health contract?
Right, so that's, we're going to discuss that in the closed session because of the personnel. Hearing no more questions or comments, we're going to move on to administrative updates. Do we have any administrative updates? Might have taken your thunder in my report.
Marlboro Day is coming up. State Highway on the bridges, so we're trying to get, once we get more information, be able to provide that information out to the public. Sidewalk, private, depending on where you're starting, water street, next couple of days, finally get enough consent.
Any other department heads have anything they want to state us on? I think we're good. Okay, so we'll move on to general public comment if you. Okay, go ahead.
So just general comments about, you know, the police department and what we do or do not do. I would just like to let people know that there's this misconception that nothing goes wrong in the town. So the Calacotts will be familiar with this handgun that was found in their yard. So I'll show it to the people online, just hope we recover, make sure you can see that. In their yard. Okay, this is a real handgun. Okay, so we're talking about police department having concerns. What, your officers recovered earlier this month? Remember, I showed one similar to this last year? So here is, so that the residents can see there online that we are out here doing our job. So there's any questions, please direct them to me so that I can answer them in any fashion or any form and not change anybody. Because our officers are out here doing their job.
Darnell, you're good?
I am good to go.
Okay. Great. Thank you, guys. We're going to move into general public comments. If you want to comment, there's still no one online, so if you want to comment, just kind of line up at the podium or take turns at the podium and we'll see.
I just came a month ago and signed up, turned up with Marlboro Day and the frac two before and on. I had a kind of communication. At that time, I did tell the partner that I did not have my computer.
Outstanding landing this time, really like it. Very, um, very easy to get through and find this stuff, especially when it tells you where to turn to what page and stuff, that's pretty cool.
You, John?
That was John.
John and I were busy.
Kudos, John, kudos, John.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Todd Phillips. I live on Spring Branch Drive. I just wanted to say the community conversation on Spring Branch was great. I had a great time speaking to people that I normally probably wouldn't speak to. The community engagement, I like where the town is going. It brought me out, today's probably my third or fourth meeting. And I like where it's going. Kudos to Lisa and me. I would like to see a little bit more youth engagement, engagement with the law enforcement officers. I spoke to a detective, I forgot her last name, Johnson. She gave me some great information, really, really encouraging, positive energy. And I just wanted to give you all your props while I can, while we're here. And hopefully we see more of this, so we have more community engagement, more diversity, more input, more everything, so.
Anyone else at the podium? So I'm going to move on to the preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Sir Coateson, can you read that for us? I left my glasses in this.
No worries. The Town of Upper Marlboro Board Work Session for May the 9th. One, call to order. Two, roll call. Three, pledge of allegiance. Four, closed session summary from 4/25/2023. Five, old business. A, Better City update. B, Ordinance 2023-03 Fiscal Year 24 Budget, a board discussion. C, Ordinance 2023-04 Personnel, board discussion. D, Charter Review Board, board discussion. E, Budget Book, board discussion. F, Arts Council Bylaws, board discussion. Six, new business, nothing yet. Seven, administrative update. Eight, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda. And nine, adjournment.
Anyone have any additions, changes, comments? A little comment that we don't know if we'll have arts council bylaws, but we hope we will so that they can have a budget. So that's why that's on there. Come off.
We may replace that with the nominate, discussion of nominations.
Nominations for, do you think we'll be ready to discuss that? Okay. So John, can you add Economic Development Work Group, EWG nomination?
Will do.
You just add that on there and then if we, hopefully, hopefully we get bylaws from our council because we are requiring committees to have bylaws to get funding.
Okay, we'll add.
Great. I guess is, so we're going to go, we're not adjourning, we're going to closed session. So, um. We are proposing, the Board of Commissioners is proposing to go into closed session under General Provisions Article 3-305B1 to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or other officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals and to consult with council to obtain legal advice. We are going into this closed session to discuss personnel matters with regards to FY24 budget and to discuss annexation. Is there a motion to go, go into closed session at this time? Is there a second?
Second.
Sir Coateson, would you call the roll? Hi? Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Henshaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot? All right, you're now in closed session.
We will have a quick recess. Commissioner Henshaw, what we'll do is we'll call you on your cell phone from this speakerphone. That will work, right, Kyle? Is that okay? And then when you.
I'm sorry, say that again?
You go off. We'll call you from the speakerphone. No, you don't have to log in, we'll call you from the speakerphone that's here on the table, on your cell phone.
All right, I'll switch over to my other device and I'll be ready in like a minute or two.
Okay, we'll be a few minutes because we have to say goodbye to the public.
Okay, okay, so I'll get set up on my phone, thank you. Good night, everyone.